We're good now.
First I asked what I should have called to order is ask for agenda approval and agenda additions. At this point, I might just add that later on the agenda where we have a topic that is, puts Mount Vernon in a good place, it puts City Council members in a challenging position in that we are looking at appointment for a city council position. And I'm going to leave those people at that, leave that on the agenda, that perfect spot. But I just want to mention to those of you that we will give you the opportunity to come up to the podium and speak for three, four, or five minutes, whatever, about what you have already written to us. That's not the seat by the citizens or whatever, but just to talk a little bit about your background and why you want to fill this council's seat. So this is, I just want to give a heads up, we're going to do it alphabetically with my last name, so mark any reason you can prefer, so, by that time, I don't know. That's my only comment on the agenda. Chris woke up and I'm like, what the heck are you doing with this agenda?
We talked earlier today, I might not have changed anything.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I'll second that.
All right. Move the second, did any, there's no discussion, all people approving the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Okay, communications, this is the time where we take public comments. On any topic that's not on the agenda or anything like that, the agenda that's included, yep?
So last week, you all got...
I get your mic here.
Turn it off.
It's been online, you can hear it.
So last week, we all got a pamphlet of information about the possibility of banning veterinary clinics in the city of Mount Vernon from doing declawing, which is a controversial subject. I guess I was just looking to get feedback, aren't you all?
To cover purpose, that usually in public comment section, since it's not an agenda item, it was last when we presented materials, but it's usually not a time that, I mean, we can ask questions or clarify questions right away like that, but it's not something that we will make a decision on or rule over or anything like that, but that's one issue.
Of course, if I have questions, anything I can answer. Dr. Doll is here, she's a doctor at the Iowa Canadian Alliance, and she directs Iowa, and she kind of heads up this area for educating and going to cities on declawing and working on ordinances to ban declawing. But we're looking, I mean, it's just Mount Vernon, Pet Health Center, Mount Vernon, and then Dr. Rick Smith is opening a clinic, he has love animals stock. I don't know for sure if he's going to do declawing, so right now, it's just Pet Health Center, Mount Vernon that offers declawing at this time. They do not use laser, they are using scalpel at this time. They do not have a preference for age or weight, the older cat gets, the harder it is on them. And then you do see ill effects from declawing cats as a whole. Yes. I've got 60 seconds for less.
Do you need your name for record?
Jennifer Doll. I'm a veterinarian, I've been doing years, and the first eight years were like, oh, Jennifer freshman life, I did declaws. Back then, in school, we were not taught about the ill effects of declawing. We were just taught the ill effects of having done it wrong. But over the last three decades, we've discovered that over 40% of cats who have been declawed during their lifetime will develop behavioral problems or as a result of chronic pain due to the fact that they have to walk a certain way. And some of them will begin to sprain as a result of constant discomfort. They don't want to be in a litter box, they avoid it. People who got the cat declawed to keep it in the house, now don't want it, and they go to the shelter. Only reason, this isn't a real radical animal rights topic, this is basic animal welfare. And we can't rely on the American Veterinary Medical Association to insist it not be done because that's the same organization that also underwent ventilation shutdown for the slaughter of 300,000 pigs at the beginning of COVID, which was written up in their journal and done. So I don't trust them to do the right thing. And the new rats coming up, they're learning this, but there will always be people willing to declaw cats. And having dealt with, even or not dogs, their rabbits that are going declawing, it's a horrendous procedure. I did it happily, thinking I was getting cats into homes for eight years, but when I moved to Iowa and I began working strictly with rescue shelters and trap litter release, I discovered there were several cats in these shelters at any given times due to the consequences of being declawed. They were biters, I would rather not work with this fly cat versus a feral cat. They bite, not all of them, and this isn't a 100%. You do have an animal that do just fine, but that does not date back from the fact that a large population of these cats do suffer. And I would say, since I work at a veterinary clinic, we do see, that's what we see, we see a lot of yearning outside the litter box. We do see bites. My little cat, Callie, she's 12 years old, she was declawed. People, they come into her house, I'll tell them, they pet her a couple of times, and then she will bite them. She just, she doesn't, she bites, she doesn't have her claws to just be like, you know, no, I'm tired of it, don't pet me, or leave me alone. And that is what you find, and we find that in the veterinary field. And I've made many calls today for yearning issues, you know, maybe outside the litter box. And then I work, with last hope, I work in rescue. And even at the clinic I work at, I'm seeing owners surrender, I'm giving them things or rescues because the cat was declawed, she was hanging outside the litter box, they're tired of it, ruining the carpet, if they not had to declaw, they would not be out of that issue.
Well, thank you for your efforts to educate. I will say that I personally learned a lot, which you gave to us. I did not realize that it was severe as what it is. I personally have a cat with claws in my house, but the thing is that we as city council members have to think about this from the standpoint of if we were to put an ordinance in place ever, we'd have to consider how we could, should, or would enforce it.
And so for that, if you're tougher people themselves not declawing, they can go outside the grounds until more cities ban it, it would be Dr. Vincent at Pet Health Center, Mount Vernon, who could not perform this surgery. It would be telling her, we are no longer in the city allowing this corrective surgery to be done on cats.
Right, but we still don't have to enforce that, and we're not going to put a police officer in or office.
I could get more information, this is something that is going to happen. Mount Vernon would be the first city in Iowa, which would be a rather great distinction. Iowa City or Johnson County, I'm working on one or the other. I will get your information on how other cities, Madison, Wisconsin, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, how are they enforcing this? I could get that information for you, so you don't have to do the police thing. There are usually in every clinic, people who didn't know what it's called. And you can oftentimes rely on that to tell them, awesome.
Since it was on the agenda last week, I mean, if you want the full discussion today, I think the sun has a big, awesome, and so that's where the feedback.
All right, I had a little agenda this week, so, but that's fine, that's fine, we're speaking now.
Now, when you're, nothing prohibits you from submitting additional information.
Great.
Anything of that nature would be beneficial. The only thing that I want to say from the previous meeting, from a staff's perspective, is being the first in the state can be a distinction, it can also be a liability from a monetary standpoint. So if there are things that you can provide that would maybe alleviate some of those fears, then I think the consideration might have a better chance of moving forward. For a process, kind of, we give the information to the council for review, and then they choose whether or not it's something they want to pursue because it would be an ordinance that would actually be written by us as the attorney, so there's another monetary amount to it. If there's not an interest from at least three, typically it doesn't move forward just because of the cost.
And there is funding to pay that.
But yeah, like I said, I would continue to submit, and then it gets delegated out to the council, and then you can decide whether or not.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your counsel, Shannon, and thank you, Dr. Doll, for coming. I apologize if I needed you in person for this meeting.
I did, that's why I thought. All right, thank you.
Move the consent agenda. Good questions, bud, or are you going to take a motion to that?
I'm willing to approve the consent agenda, is this?
Thank you, Shannon, for a second. I think I heard Deb.
Deb's second.
Thanks for checking in, Deb, I should have done this sooner, Jeff. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, all favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Nonpublic hearing for the fiscal question of the year 2022-23, maximum property tax dollars for the city of Mount Vernon. Mr. Curtis.
Again, this was added, I want to say two years ago, maybe three years ago now. It is intended to provide clarification.
Chris?
Yeah?
Do you have your mic on?
Oh, no. Can you hear me now?
I can.
So this, all I said, Deb, was this was introduced two to three years ago. It is designed to bring more focus on the budget process. I think it confuses people more than it does anything. If you look at public hearing notice, it looks like our max property tax levy is $11.69, but if you read the footnote at the very bottom, that doesn't include like three or four of the levies that get added on to, it says 1299. In Mount Vernon, we've been very clear on what the goals have been, and we've kept the levy rate for the city at 1299 for years. So here's the public hearing, people are definitely able to ask questions, but the bottom line is two things, one, the levy wasn't, isn't proposed to change beyond the 1299, and two, we saw just under 8% growth in valuation after seeing three years of under 2. So, really, that's what goes down to.
Anyone here for the public, would you speak to that budget? Any comments coming to City Hall?
They can, they can just come to City Hall, they like...
They're having a meeting?
No, they haven't been in a meeting in the three years we've done it.
Do we need to open the public hearing, close the public hearing?
I'm sure I personally said that.
Is this the public hearing?
We're doing the public hearing now. Officially, open the public hearing. Paul's rolling his eyes, because we're talking about that. Even the public here is speaking to this guy.
I'm the last person cast, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, Scott. Here we go, public comment, and there's no one online that is registering anything either.
Nope.
And we're officially closed the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022-23 property tax dollars. Let's see my word. Do we now to...
Do you want?
Action?
I would move resolution 2-7-2022A, proven fiscal year 2022-2023 maximum property tax dollars.
They all, they're second.
I'm second.
He's second. For discussion? Are we ready to motion?
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Thank you. Excited as a budget amendment number one for the fiscal year 2022, official to that public hearing. And by name of the public that would like to respond to that budget amendment one.
Would you like Chris to explain it, Chris?
Yep, yeah, do you have any comments to add?
Nothing too crazy to add, so there were a couple of things, large things, which prompted to be a budget amendment at this point. The first is the American Rescue Plan dollars, we received our first half in fiscal years. Those are obviously not budgeted for, a budget was submitted before it was announced. So there's 333,000 in art funds that were distributed to the city, that's payment one, there'd be another 333,000 that would come either at the end of this fiscal year or the beginning of next fiscal year. And then, if you remember correctly, the brand new truck that everybody got to see plowing the streets was ordered two years ago, scheduled to be paid out of that budget, but we don't pay for it until we actually get it, so we had to, we're just under 200,000, so we had to pay for that, so we had to amend the budget to reflect those dollars. So nothing, the art money is new, the truck money is volatile, but it was just in previous months, and so.
Last call for any public inputs. Thank you for clarifying. Just before that part of the public hearing, the budget amendment is closed. In order to act upon that budget amendment, council?
I believe we are, so I approve of resolution 2-7-2022B, approving budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Deb. Bring the votes, please, Sue.
Herman?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we're going to the last resolution, 2-7-2022C, who will dispose of the C-1 property? Continuation's in session from the last meeting?
So this is actually, it will seem somewhat backwards of a process for everybody. Normally, when we order or get special skid loaders, we will typically just trade in the old vehicle for the new. Given the market and the fact that used vehicles are, or used equipment are bringing higher than normal prices, we did receive a trade-in value, so we have an established trade-in value. But we would like to put this on GovDeals and see what we can get there. If we can beat that trade-in price, and we can sell the used equipment, all right. The skid loader that we are looking to purchase is actually in next fiscal year. We won't take possession until next fiscal year, but they only have four. One particular company only has four that choose to go with them, and that will be available July 1. So what we would like to do, obviously, is see where we're at with that, and then at the next meeting, we would come, as we have in the past, and ask permission to purchase that piece of equipment in next fiscal year. It is part of the CIP, so it is a planned improvement, and it's basically, we have two skid loaders, we're asking to move one of those skid loaders, well, we're on our wheel units, but we would like to have a track skid loader for one, we'll be able to, and the other unit is new, newer. We've got that, I think, let's say, three or four years ago. So that's kind of why this is odd that we have a resolution disposing of property when we haven't approved or purchased yet.
Is there, is there danger, I mean, the advantage of these trade-ins is we don't give them the piece of equipment that we're using until they give us the new.
Yes, so...
So, you know, in light of the truck that took two years to get here, is there danger?
No, so we would not post this on GovDeals until the day after the next meeting, until council gives us the go-ahead, basically, to purchase the additional skid loaders. And at that point, we know that we're, we can put the order in, and then I'll feel more comfortable. Like I said, if we get the order in, and we're one of, let's just say, under that particular vendor, we're one of those four, and I know where I have it, then we put it on GovDeals, and if it sells before the end of the fiscal year, we will be okay. We do have two skid loaders, but I'll feel more comfortable that way. I do not want to be sitting for a year and a half without that.
That was my only question, aren't we, that, that process? Anyone have anything to add?
Yeah, probably some of those things, I guess. This, this particular skid loader, it's an 08, it's older, it was actually, I know, previously next kind of revolving equipment update, I can't remember what you call that. So it was scheduled to be processed out and then to replace it. Several things that we would like to use the tracks skid loader for, one, which would be like sanitary work, it doesn't leave a lot of ruts and stuff to clean up, it leaves a nicer finished product, we can do it in the hour. You know, we're doing a lot more projects, dirtwork projects and stuff, outside of just upgrading, upgrading the skid loaders, so. The rubber, it's kind of a toss-up, I think the tracks are a better unit for the snow pusher that we use down the park, for the smaller pusher that we use, there's more ground surface, or surface area where the tracks are touching the ground, get better traction, that sort of thing, with the continued, I know we have the end loader, but the continued material that we're using out at Front Road, the site, the compost, the dirt, the mulch, and all that stuff out there. Currently, either one of the rubber truck skid loaders that we have will lift one of the bunker blocks, but it's a little sketchy sometimes for loading those on trailers for events downtown, transporting those, so. So now we have a loader, we can, we can load those on a trailer, get them uptown, then I take the loader up there. If this other skid loader is, or the size of the skid loader we're looking at, we'd be able to handle those fine, so we could load one at one spot, keep the loader at the other spot, it would kind of speed things up that way. With all the right-of-the-work that we're doing, tree, tree grinding, using cleaning up, and that sort of thing, it leaves less of an impression of right-of-the way to clean up their, their finished product. Literally have a lot to, I should take some notes here for tomorrow, but.
And for discussion and motion is approval of the disposal, first of all, so.
Well, so the bigger, the bigger issue is, like Chris had mentioned with the dump truck, there's been four, maybe five of those in like June 1st, right now, I haven't been spoken for them. They, they can't guarantee that they're going to get any later, after June 1st, just because of the way things, I mean, we're all aware of how, how less we're operating, so I mean, I guess the longer we wait, the less we chance we have to get an order in and get it ready. So I'm not trying to rush anything or expedite anything, I just want, I don't want to run into a two-year wait on updating that skid loader. And I, and I'll have numbers of the best sort of thing put together for the next year.
And like I said, we, GovDeals allows us to put a reserve, so if we don't get that amount, then...
The trade-in amount?
Yeah. The goal would be, even if we got 1,000 or 1,000 more than the trade-in value, that'd be a pretty decent price for a new skid loader.
So will council on the agenda item, move this one?
Move approval of resolution 2-7-2022C, approving the disposal of city-owned property?
Thank you, Paul, is your second?
I'm second.
She's second. Any further discussion, questions, bring the votes?
Tyler?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. No mayor proclamations this month, and no other business, moving to motion to approval consideration claims list, last one was set out this afternoon, lady. Any questions? What can we have for that?
A move approval of the claims list as presented?
She's second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deb. All favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, excited to discuss the consideration of corporate-related issues.
So, really, like I said, just two highlights from my report. As of this morning here today, the seven-day positivity rate is down to five in Burley County. As I put in my report, the state is no longer going to report on COVID like they have in the past, they will treat it like other respiratory illnesses, so what I'm blaming from what's coming out of Des Moines is that they're no longer going to be reporting this other pandemic, and I think they're starting the transition to the endemic. The only thing that I would tell you that with the governor's proclamation dropping off on the 15th is it will be, it will make meetings more challenging for other boards of commissions that haven't been meeting in person. We've been allowed to do the Zoom meeting scenario under the governor's proclamation for the pandemic, but that may go by the wayside moving forward. So my one fear is, is if we will lose any order commissioners, if they're required to start meeting in person, we'll make accommodations as much as possible as far as social distancing is concerned, if that is just for, with your thought, one concern that I have.
So when you say that, is that just using Zoom for participation? So we could still do a Zoom meeting and people could hear it?
So my understanding is we need, have to hold in-person meetings. We can allow a Zoom option, but that can't be the only option, correct? That would be what would happen when the proclamation goes away, is that was one protection we were afforded, if we, you know, if you came to me today and said, we want to go back to the Zoom option, the numbers are skyrocketing, under the proclamation, we have been fine, once the proclamation is gone, we lose that protection. So individuals, I, you know, for me, I think continuing with the Zoom option for the foreseeable future makes a lot of sense, you have participation that way. It does make it more difficult for what we're going, currently, voting, considered voting by proxy from the Zoom option, we will have to have a fore on the present, I believe, in order to make future meetings work.
Is that really the only, because I, as, as this news was coming out, I was trying to think of ways that this would just realistically, in a more boots-on-the-ground kind of way, affect us, and I, I didn't even come up with that one, I just couldn't.
So that one, the other big one is procurement. So when the state's not under an emergency proclamation, procurement of emergency products for, typically for like PD and fire, is more challenging. Now we'd have to go and purchase it ourselves, they don't have a stockpile necessarily, and it just trickles down, so once the state issues a proclamation, and then they give the authority to stockpile, and there's monies that are available under that emergency, those are all at home. So we would, I would imagine we'll have limited access to some of those supplies for probably the next two to three months, but after that, I think it will get fairly tricky.
Well, certainly, I'd like to see the numbers trying to count. Ironically, just today, I received my four free test kits from the Department of Government. They're the same quick test that I bought at Mount Vernon Pharmacy, so.
I, I do have, I, the Housing Commission has been very, very cautious to meet in person. How will we let the leaders of each of these committees know about this possibility? How, how will we let the leaders of each of these committees know about this possibility so they can inform their committee what may be transpiring?
So, what I have asked the attorneys for an opinion on at this point are kind of a, a joint question. So, there are commissions slash boards that make recommendations only, are not required to have public hearing notices, things of that nature, just posting an agenda. Um, my hope is that some of those would be given a little bit more freedom because it's not definitive. The, the boards and commissions that concern me more than anything would be planning zoning board adjustment, those that have statutory notice requirements. Um, star preservation is another one that has statutory provisions. So, I would, once I get those answers, I would inform the council. Once the council's informed, then I would reach out to each of those via the department head, who's kind of in charge of meeting with them, and just inform them that they will have to start transitioning back possibly in March.
Thanks for that update, Chris, and the data in our reports as well as the potential implications of that, what that framework of people today gets. Um, and as a question from Deb, how will it affect our committees? So, um, I guess we keep this on as a placeholder for a few more meetings or a long meeting or whatever.
It's not going anywhere. Changing the dynamic.
Keep it as a placeholder then. Um, next item is discussion consideration upon the city council vacancy by appointing council action as needed. Um, purpose of this discussion, it's a solid issue to fill out. Um, I'm able to two year term, it's like a year and nine months at this point term. And I think at the last meeting, Paul made a motion to, um, to go through the appointment process by the council. Um, I believe Chris said that there is a window, pendays after this decision was made that the public can.
Yeah, so there is, there was a, a public notice that was posted in the paper. Had to give the date, time, and place of the hearing. Had to give individuals interested in pursuing the appointment, the opportunity to submit materials. And then it also had to, to notify the general public that whatever comes later, a ten day period from the time of that publication or a ten day period from the time of the appointment, it's usually that appointment because it always comes after. So, from the time of the actual appointment, there are ten days where people can petition for a special election. I believe, see, with that, the last special election that we had, um, thirty-five, thirty-four?
It was, um.
Once it was, was by four thousand, that's the cost of holding a special election. And balance, you think so. Um, the nice part of the appointment process is you used to be appointed until the next general election and it was any election. So, you might have been appointed for four months and then the next election came and then you could, you could be elected, but you only, you still only filled out that term. Um, they changed that, so you will fill out the remainder of Tom's term with the exception, I still believe the rule that November fourth, if you choose not to run, um, the day after, the person that would run and, and actually win the seat could take office for the remainder. So, you were definitely here for a year from November. Um, and then from there, you know, obviously the hope is you enjoyed it enough that you would consider running again.
So, you was lucky to have, I'm very fortunate to have three good candidates come forward. I thank them for that. Um, they presented their material, which was, was sent to all of us as, as council members and so on. Um, that, so, but then we're going to reduce the market, let's process start in a minute. Uh, the council needs to decide at some point if they want to make a decision tonight or they won't make a decision next meeting, but that's about as far as you can go with the process, if I remember correctly.
Unless you hold a special meeting, but you have to make the appointment by March first.
So, I'm, I'm, I'll let you know the expectations as well.
I, I'm sorry, we have to make the appointment by March first?
The appointment has to be made within sixty days of.
Oh, this is our first meeting in February. Okay.
Yep.
And just as a process question, this would be a motion.
It's a simple motion.
Motion and second or?
Mm-hmm.
In the era of process questions, I'm used to having, in, in one way, I consider this a personnel discussion, but this is not like a personnel discussion with Chris's appraised, which is a subject of a closed meeting, illegally closed meeting. Here, uh, we want to make it a, the result of a, an open meeting and so on. That's what we're doing here. And, um, I did check on that part of the process to make sure that we're all comfortable with that. So, um, something else I think we're going to reduce market reasons.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Um, based on the fact that it would either need to be at this meeting or the next meeting. And I see, um, the next item is the potential of moving the next meeting. When would the meeting potentially be moved to?
If we stick to past practice, we, the last three times that we moved, we moved to the fall of Wednesday. So, it would be, um, Wednesday, the twenty-third of the year.
And then still falls into what statutory.
You just have, it just has to be done by March first. So, you technically have until, I would, I would need the twenty-seventh. So, you can meet on the twenty-eighth, but I would need twenty-seventh to post an agenda. Which is a twenty-four hours.
I don't know that anybody wants to push that.
Those are questions because you're not aware, but we've done the past practices.
Right, and I won't be here after the twenty-second. Okay. Actually, after the twenty-first, I won't be here.
What I suggested to Tom today was to give each of you, uh, three to five minutes to kind of either rehash what you've submitted or kind of give your position statement. And then the council is welcome to ask questions individually and then it falls down to them. So, the first person to make a motion to appoint somebody and gets a decision, that's the first of them. So.
We can also make the decision to wait until it's meeting.
Correct. The motion can be to table or it can be to choose somebody's name.
Because my question is, may I repeat, you know, if it does get table, is there a reason for getting, maybe getting it tabled? So, but that's, right, the council decides, it's on me. So, I think at this point.
It's an option, right?
Was I?
She says it's an option?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Briesen?
No.
Come forward and just shut off. I like to thank you. And I'm not sure, I'm not thinking I'm going to gather, you only have five minutes or anything like that. But just.
My name is Mark Andrews and thanks for having me. I mean, I'm a teenager, uh, because I tend to pretty much have a medium and a half. So, uh, good to see you all. Um, I'll just keep it really brief and simple. You know, moved here with my daughter, you know, she's eight years old, goes to Mount Vernon, uh, Washington, Tennessee. I'm a military, uh, she's in third grade, my parents live here in town as well. So, we've got all this, uh, here in town now. Um, really enjoying it. Shortly upon moving here to a great interest and, uh, you know, how the community works here and decided we really like it and we're here to stay. All of us, my daughter knows it here. Um, I've had the opportunity to work, um, you know, with local businesses in town and, uh, it's been a lot of people around town, um, have different businesses, working seeing the coming and going of different people. I'm a school president, restaurant manager. I started working probably definitely when I was a ten year old for, um, a baseball team. You know, just doing laundry, full laundry, you know, I'm joking, saying everything. Um, just helping out around. So, as I went to college, I found a place where I just really enjoyed serving people and that's continued experience there and things where, you know, uh, manage, you know, in management and, you know, of course, start four diamond hotels. Uh, and overseeing different departments, I'll be, you, I'm always been able to adjust, um, make quick decisions when necessary, but listen and, um, you know, make the correct decisions, uh, especially dealing with a lot of different situations that will come up in a hotel. That's nineteen stories. Um, so, um, I like being into, in leadership role, really enjoying the city. And I, I think I have a lot to offer. Uh, one of my strengths is, you know, being able to help and, and talk to people and explain things, make adjustments and really take my time to look over, you know, like the, the baseball gear with the cats, you know? We need to take them into consideration and what that goes into. It wasn't probably that before they put that information in and that stuff that I don't want to listen to, you know, just that for instance. So, just want to continue making this, uh, city great. Um, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a great time of life here and I'd like to help make the decisions and it's like done my research and I will have been reading sort of fifty, six hundred, twenty two page backs. So, yeah, essentially. So, uh, but yeah, thanks again and, uh, I'm great.
Thank you. Nobody has that very keen minding of loss for words.
Um, I was going to offer an opportunity for questions mark now. Any other questions for? I don't know if you've seen it. We'll make them up sometime later, so I don't have that, that possible.
I do have one.
Yep.
So, Mark, I'm just curious, you know, you've heard some of our conversations, um, you know, what you've read, what do you personally see as priorities?
Priorities here, I mean, we, we draw people in through our downtown area. So, there've been discussions of, you know, kind of steering people up here and keeping that downtown because we have laws in places and stuff that people, you know, because as, as working in a house safe, people would stop in and we make this drive every year and just like the businesses, oh, but what happened to this one, what happened to that? So, that, but also, you know, looking at the pool, um, because that stuff needs to be looked at well in the future, obviously. Um, just the way I look at it is, um, and obviously you do that within budget, so that's my, Chris is a different guy. Um, the school system's going to be growing and I go to some of the schools or meetings also and, um, yeah, it's, it's planning a little bit for that type of thing. Um, and when it can happen, like involved in that process is to where we're going with our children also.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Engle, Craig Engle? Welcome.
Get the single over here. Well, obviously, uh, wrote a letter, so you have a little bit of an idea of who I am and where I've been and so on. Just as a bit of a reprisal of that, um, lived in Mount Vernon, started as a student in nineteen eighty-four, uh, then moved back here when my wife took her job in Cornell in nineteen ninety-four. So, lived here for about thirty years, pretty invested in the community at this point. Raised our daughter here, she's out of graduate school in Scotland, studying environmental science and, uh, worked with Russell Noel Levitz, Noel Levitz Higher Ed Consulting Firm for the better part of twenty-six years. Um, started as a junior consultant, left as a senior vice president and leadership role there, managed people, did quite a bit of consulting, traveled a lot, a lot of different college campuses, university campuses, working with presidents and cabinets, being a change agent, um, helping move institutions from the current state to desired state, things like that. And many years ago, really, I was golfing one time for a community and was golfing with one of our community leaders and he had sat or used it in the house and, uh, he just kind of said, yeah, everybody needs to step up to keep this community vibrant, keep the culture of the community whole in a good direction. And I thought to myself, I'd love to do something like that, but I'm traveling, you know, about a hundred nights a year at this point, very, very difficult to do that. Well, two years ago, I retired and had a huge list of things that I wanted to do. Pandemic hit, that huge list went down a complete deal, uh, but still had the potential to serve in a volunteer leadership position of some way, shape, or form here in Mount Vernon. And now, as we do, between endemic stage, Chris said, uh, and boy, it must happen seeing the sun that maybe this is a call, maybe this is something that I'm being nuts to do right now. And so, I thought that I would go ahead and get Tom a call and ask him, what, fifteen questions? And, uh, and then it does it a little bit and said, yeah, I think that I'll go ahead and throw my hat to Ray and, and, and do this. Um, as I said, I think we're pretty invested in this community. My parents before me, my grand, grandfather, grandfather before now as well. Um, I've had a lot of experience dealing with a lot of different types of individuals all over the country. Uh, and I think the last thing I'll just say here is that one of the things I admire about groups of people that come together, especially when they have different backgrounds and making different goals and viewpoints of things, is the ability to collaborate, work well together, uh, talk things through, make sure they understand before they make a decision, so that when you leave the room, you feel you've been heard, you made a good solid decision and there's no water cooler talking afterwards and say, okay, we did that as a group and what was best for the city above it. Um, last thing I'll just say here is that my dad once said to me, it's nice to have options in life and you do have some good options here, so you're very fortunate. Questions for you?
Just so you know, you don't always leave and everybody feels. Just for the record, uh, I don't want you to have an unrealistic view. However, I, I will say that it is, um, uh, having been in many different roles here, that, that, that is one of the most satisfying pieces, even when not everybody agrees, generally speaking in Mount Vernon, you're still thrusters and, and that says a lot. So, uh, I, I'm just going to preempt Steph and ask you a third question. What do you see as the priority over the next, you know, two, three years?
I'll answer that in a couple of ways. Um, first of all, managing growth, because this community, when I first showed up here in nineteen eighty-four, uh, we used to say in the admissions office, it's about thirty-two hundred people and now we're, what, you know?
Bucking in twenty-five.
Yeah, exactly. And so, how do you manage that growth? And Mark kind of alluded to that with schools as well, making sure that you can maintain uh, the, the culture of the place. The second way that I'll answer that is in working with colleges and universities and on the boards and leadership positions in the past, two priorities here, um, I usually was looking for three things that, that boards and, and people in leadership positions would do. One is to manage the, you know, the vision for, in this case, the city of Mount Vernon. Manage the vision, the vision to come from the citizens of Mount Vernon. Uh, two would be to manage the finance because there is no vision if you can't afford it. So, managing the finance part of that. And the third is managing the culture, trying to make sure that as you grow, uh, you're able to maintain a lot of the spirit of who we are and why we love this town. Uh, I asked Tom when I talked to him, what are the biggest issues that are out there right now to, to that point? And a lot of huge issues like pulling the police departments together, uh, that's already happened. And as Tom said to me, yeah, I think one of the biggest issues we have really now is rolling out waste management and doing the transition there. So, I realize there's a lot of those issues. I, I'll, I'll have a word on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well done. Well, Mark. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. Um, and I'll start with my interest and, and Craig said it very well. Uh, we live in a wonderful town and it takes a lot of people to get out and, and, you know, I can deal with, so it's a blessing to live here and, and I'm certain wanting to be back. Um, I've done it previously, I've served in the school board here for teachers. Uh, so I'm familiar with, with tax rates and these contracts, higher rate, sometimes I didn't know of any rate, that kind of thing, so I've had that experience. Um, I've lived here, um, I think it's the first week here in two thousand and four. Lived here since two thousand and eight. I'm here because this is my wife's hometown and it's just happened to be the best place I've ever lived. So, this is probably my seventh residence and I would say it was a close second, but it was to me, uh, this is better. Uh, since I moved here, my mother's relocated here, my brother's relocated here. Um, oh, I can, I have four children, uh, two of them are in the, uh, Mount Vernon School District, I have about five grandchildren, uh, two of them are in Mount Vernon School District, one's over in Lisbon right now. So, um, we've got some.
So we've got some roots here and I certainly want to do my part to continue making this a wonderful place. In terms of my work, I'm a sustainable engineer for Quaker Roads. So I support six Quaker brands in North America to help them meet their sustainability goals. So I travel a little bit, but then I turned it off, I was doing that when I was a school board member as well. And managed to balance that okay. No questions here for me?
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah. What, you know, you were setting a precedent when you asked the same question. So we're, you know, same question, what sort of priorities do you see for the city over the next five years?
Well, to me, the first tricky question probably the pool. And that kind of, uh, is, is near and dear by heart that I have children who use the pool at random, who'd like the pool or it's not. It's going to be a hard decision moving forward. Certainly the growth, as I mentioned before, you know, obviously we have new housing going in. We've got a school district that's very well respected in the area, people want to move here. So I think, you know, there's probably going to be more and more home construction here. And how do we integrate that and include city services and handle that as well? I think the other thing, and this may come from my school board experiences, is, you know, we're very lucky at Cornell College here. A lot of resources there, a lot of opportunities. And so I think, you know, between Cornell, Auburn, the schools and the city, there's probably some synergies there that makes sense to try to, to expand on and reinforce. I do want, and one other thing is, like Craig said, I think it's wonderful that they have a choice, that you have free people. I realize that it puts me in a very awkward position, so just know that, that we know that and appreciate, appreciate your input.
So, hey, Mark, I have one more question. Just curious, so we just had a general election, right, in the fall with the seating of the new council in January. Why now? Why are you making your decision now to throw your name in the hat?
Really because there was a vacancy, what I saw was, is it unmet need? So I was on the school board until two years ago and I chose not to run it that morning. I'd been out for two terms and I was, you know, interested in taking a little, little bit of a break, letting some other people have a say. But I feel a little bit refreshed and regenerated, I suppose. I did very much enjoy my school board experience. It was very intellectually challenging, you know, just trying to figure out what school finance really looks like. That was, was an eye opener, very interesting. And also the, uh, the ability to contribute in a board or a council or commission, say, is, is something that I think works well for me, right? I'm not very much a cheerleader going out there, one of the festival days, I'm doing a lot of things. So this is the way that I see that I can contribute.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mark? Thank you very much, Mark. It's Mark who's listening now, it's time we need to think about what we want to do, where we want to do everything. It's all, I mean, now, I guess I overlook my turn.
So do we make a motion to decide to appoint tonight and then do that? Or you just go, if we want to make a motion to appoint tonight, just make a motion to appoint?
You just make a motion to appoint and the individual that he would carry to appoint. So the appointment process has already happened, you voted at the last meeting, moving forward with that. So from this point on, uh, two motions, either table until the second meeting or make a motion to appoint one of the individuals that is in charge.
Before we any further here, there's four people obviously that are voting on this. It may be, it may be an easy decision, but at a two.
Yeah, in the event of a two.
In the event of, who would that be? If there were candidates.
In the event of a two-two tie, the motion would die.
Pardon?
Oh, yeah, since we're not choosing A or B, we're choosing S or N on one person.
So in the event of a two-two tie, the motion would die. And then you have to wait for another.
So then we either motion there, somebody else, or we remake that?
Next one, we do a motion.
You have, you have that right, sir. And holding that gavel really feels good at times.
It takes away the opportunity to vote, though, and that doesn't miss out. So that was a, yeah, trust me.
I know that feeling.
He wants to leave.
What's that? No, actually, I mean, this is a very public process for that reason.
You really don't think we can ask you?
No. The only thing you can't do is ask me my opinion, because I'm going to have to work with one of you regardless.
I'd like to start out, just in general discussion, by saying thank you to all three of you. Having served as a volunteer in Parks and Rec and as a council member woman once and as mayor. I know what you're getting into and it's, you don't make those decisions lightly. And it's, uh, I'm grateful that we have three sound candidates to choose from. Having said that, uh, based on my experience and my knowledge of the quality candidates we have, I would like to make a motion to appoint Craig Anvil to fill the open council seat.
This is a motion, Craig Anvil, or second? Second by seven. Further questions or discussion appropriate? Deb, did you hear that?
Yeah, I answered my, um.
That this motion approved on the floor, seconded, um, to accept the interest of Craig Anvil for that open council spot. Did you catch that?
Yes.
If we are ready to vote, on the day with the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, this one? Motion carries, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, very much. That's. Four people in the council, that's some guts from four people in the council making this decision. And yes, this is the meeting in the public, but is, uh, but is, this is our meeting to make those decisions. So I'm glad we went through the process that we did. I want to echo Paul's comments about thanks. And, and thanks for what you've been doing for the community. Thanks for what I, I hope you will continue to do for the community. I know it's a board activity and I know your interest, Mark, in the smallest of the community. So, um, it took some guts for you to come up here and lay that on the table for us. Thank you, Paul, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Now, I think we need to move on to the discussion of the next state meeting, the present state of town. Are you, um, anything on the issues of the fall of the twenty-second, twenty-third?
Yeah, so I, I want to remind you guys that I'm, I'm like remote right this second, but I can make the effort to come back to Mount Vernon to meet in person. So I was just texting with Paul just a little bit, so I can make that happen.
So I can't remember why I moved to Wednesday last time, just saying.
So, uh, travel, so there were individuals that were moving out of town. And to give them an additional day to get back in and get situated is the reason that it was moved to Wednesday instead of Tuesday. As far as staff is concerned, it doesn't matter what day of the week you choose.
So Paul, would that make it easier for you with your pending travel?
In my case, the twenty-third is a problem.
Yeah.
Like it's a problem, so you prefer Tuesday?
I prefer, yeah, Tuesday.
And Frank, the other, or one of them?
Answer will be.
It doesn't matter to me because we have an additional order set and I'm not worried about that anymore. Which was my concern. But he's not saying that.
I think we can both be sworn in until the ten day period.
Oh, that's right.
So I would prefer Tuesday.
Which is absolutely fine, basically.
Is that a motion?
I will move that our city council meeting is moved to Tuesday, February twenty-two, in lieu of the holiday on February twenty-one.
And I will second that. Deb, Paul, any further discussion of questions, city staff, is it okay with that? Ready to vote on the February twenty-second, moving the presidency meeting to Tuesday. All the favorite motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. I said, this discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date for March, uh, from March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, to consider the city number of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for full budget, but that would need custom action.
And this is just setting the public hearing for the first?
Yeah, we actually have more time now, but Sue and I are bringing for that March fifteenth deadline, so.
Uh, in that case, I would move approval of setting the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget for the first meeting in March, the seventh.
Second?
I'll second this.
Thank you, Deb. Any question, discussion? All the favorite motion, please, oh wait. Yeah, all the favorite motion, please say aye.
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 General, so our resolution carries, motion carries. Any reports to receive and file? Discussion items, CIP budget discussion, anything forward to add to your report sheets?
Um, no, well, I do, yes, one thing. Uh, I did talk to Dave Checkinger and he does believe that we have, um, some ability to keep that pool of potential meter candidates.
He does believe or doesn't?
He does, yes. So that was my, my biggest fear. So there, and the reason for that, there are three, um, large manufacturer slash meter companies that generally operate in Iowa. And there are a host of others, but those, they're well known in Iowa and they have kind of a track record. My fear was getting a company that I was unfamiliar with, do you do a super low bid or something? And being nervous about the transition at that point. So I want to be able to pick the best company with the best product and an overall scope versus just getting the cheapest units we can find.
So that's a really good point. And if I'm not mistaken, Iowa law states that as a city council, when we decide to let a bid, the, uh, parameters are the best responsible bid, not necessarily the cheapest. And so just for the record, I think it's important that we remind everyone of that. Because that doesn't happen very often. So if we state that upfront, it's on the record that, that we would be following that. We wouldn't have to explain it after the fact if that were to come out.
The pitfalls with that particular funding, so going with SRF versus going with a general obligation debt is, SRF likely have a slightly higher interest rate. It has prevailing wage, Davis Bacon. So there are, you have to buy American Steel. There's a number of things that you have to actually abide by versus going just a straight general obligation debt. But I think that is far outweighed by two of the larger items on scenario one. Number one, this facility and not having to go back through the urban renewal process or take two to three months to go through, you know, potential rapid random. And the second is, you know, talking about priorities and the fact that the pool is, you know, kind of present in everybody's mind is making sure that we have debt capacity in the GO fund. We're very healthy as a community. We have, you know, a rock solid debt capacity policy. I mean, I am just thinking long term, if the pool were to, if the council decided to take the pool to a vote of the people in the next two to three years, the only obstacle in your way is debt capacity. So in, in trying to preserve that is what I'm doing by these two scenarios. They still accomplish the same thing. It's just a difference in funding mechanisms. So for those in the audience, SRF is the state revolving one. It is repaid with revenue debt, therefore we do not have to count it against our statutory debt limit. And it frees up then that statutory debt limit for items that have specifically need to go in that category. So that's your streets, facilities, pools, things of, you know, all the popular things, I would say, trails, um, fall into that category. So keeping as much cap, capacity available, I think, would prove beneficial moving forward, just knowing how crazy busy we've been over the past four years, so.
And not to our horn, but we've been really responsible with finances. And so it's not as though we risk bumping up against that statutory debt. We, we keep our own in-house one that we have steered well clear of, correct?
Yeah, so we, we lop off twenty percent of that limit right off the bat, just for rainy days and drachos and anything else that's willing to come our way. But it, you know, it could be.
I, I say this more as an educational point, not.
Yes, so realistically, in two years, if we didn't take any more debt, we'd have, you know, almost fifty-six percent of our debt capacity available to us. We lop off twenty percent. So, you know, that's just me in my mind saying, five limes for available, uh, potential pool. Five lime looks a lot better than, you know, two or three. Just gives you more options.
And from my perspective, and, and, you know, we've used SRF, uh, in, in the past, harder to, to Chris. And when you're doing a project that falls in that category where you're working on, on, you know, infrastructure, it, it, it's one of the reasons that that mechanism is there. Because you then are paying for it through the utilities that you're not taxing for, but that are being paid for by the users. And I think that Chris makes a really good point in terms of when you look at our, our list of priorities and where funding can, can come from. Having the, the general obligation as open as possible makes a lot of sense to me.
I agree. So now, actually, any other discussion about CIP budget?
Again, I just appreciate the great job of putting the information in a way that an old farm boy can understand.
Just the scenarios, yes. We go on to the next one, solar discussion item, not direction. Um, thank you, Chris, for indulging me in something that's of occasion of mine, but some of the information that was presented, that's possible dissection of our personal power, our, our personal agreement, PPA. We already have a third line on the city hall.
So I had talked about handing out some maps and then I realized the maps say confidential on the, kind of a prior, priority issue. But really what I, I wanted to reach out to the council. So in Mount Vernon, uh, ground mounted solar is a condition to use permanent. So even for the city, you would have to go through the board adjustment in order to make that happen. My particular feeling is based upon, uh, the proposals are, if we were to do a ground mounted, ground mounted system, I would either incorporate it into, they're doing it as like sunshades, cars park underneath them, or roof mounted. My preference would be to steer clear of having a kind of a solar farm look, uh, to both the LVC and the PD. Now, we could do a ground mounted system at the PD and do it at the rear of this facility, I think, and still define. But I want to give Red Lion some kind of parameters when he's doing the design work that, hey, this is what we would prefer. And then he can run. more realistic, um, savings. But I think the, the savings, I mean, just based upon initial estimates of, you know, both facilities, almost a million dollars over a thirty-year period is pretty significant. That's if everything kind of stays normal like it is right now, so.
So, hey, Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
So if we did that, um, sun shade option, would that be a way to maybe defer the need to, um, do the immediate improvement to the, um, the, um, police facility? If we could provide that shade, if we could provide that additional canopy, would that let us elongate that improvement timeline for what is the sanctuary where you guys are all sitting?
So, um, I don't want to just, I don't want to say no, because there's options to it, but there would be for two different reasons. So, the, having the garage facility here is more for security purpose. I mean, it obviously elongates the life of a vehicle, but for police vehicles, we're turning them out every five years as it is, just because of the wear and tear that we put on that equipment. But it's the security of our officers being able to drive in a location, shut the doors, and keep that equipment inside versus outside. And we've had vehicles, they've had vehicles keyed, um, they've had them vandalized in the past. So, it, it's one of those items that it's not, it's not necessarily keeping the, the sun or keeping them underneath unit as much as it's...
I was thinking more from a protection point of view. Is there a way that we can configure the sun shade with that protection of the vehicles? While it not, is not absolutely perfect, it's better than sitting out in a local parking lot? It's just a question.
So, good.
A lot of our, a lot of the issues that we deal with with our vehicle as well is temperature control. It's not just sun, um, issues from there. We have items in our vehicle that need to be, while we buy military-grade computers to keep in the vehicle so they can handle extreme temperatures, um, the exposure from those, our AEDs, um, the batteries can, will freeze in those if they fall below a certain level. Um, Narcan, that's in the medical bags, there's a lot of different items in there, um, that has, has, is problematic to leave them outside in an uncontrolled environment in that aspect, was what I was going to add.
But to answer your question, I could go back to Red Lion and say, can you look at doing sun shades? I don't believe the west parking lot would be conducive because there's a lot of trees, without tree root. The east parking lot could potentially be, um, a site, uh, they were proposing in front of the building, I had proposed not to make that a focal point of the location, but, um, to answer your question, it would solve probably one of a few issues that they're looking to solve with the renovations here, but, um, I thi, I think, I mean, I hate to, I hate to shut the door on any possibility, because it's, it's worth having a discussion with them. I've only seen, you know, he's only submitted kind of one model for, uh, rendering from a picture perspective of those sun shades, so they basically look like it's a big canopy and the sun on. I know there's other ways to do it, so I, I don't want to say no, um, because I don't think I, I have possessed the knowledge yet to, to do that.
Yeah, I, I certainly have viewed police being in those parked underneath as shade like what was presented to us. I don't know the pros and cons, I have no idea, um, but it just begs the question in my head of whether that is an option.
And so you're, I mean, we have, we have also proposed garages out here, like standalone trams where they could walk in, um, so we, I mean, like I said, we could stair-step into that project as well. Uh, obviously, what you're looking at is the most ideal scenario, uh, under the circumstances, but, um, yeah, I, there's definitely options available to you. I think, I just, for my own piece of mind, wanted to make sure that I wasn't making a decision or telling Red Lion, hey, not putting anything in front of a building, that's not necessarily my call, but I don't want to have him put a proposal together and say, you can have X amount of savings with him thinking that that's what they're going to do. Remember the, the purchase power agreement, the reason for going that route, obviously, is so that we do not have to spend the upfront cost to put the infrastructure in, and they do that for us, and then re-keep their cost over that twenty-year, thirty-year period. And it hasn't worked, we have reduced bills at City Hall, so, um, when I was talking to him last, I'm like, we originally talked, our purchase of this building, the LBC, were too new for him to be able to run numbers and statistically tell us, uh, whether or not they'd be even good again. Now, if he's been here for a year, um, and he knows how we're running it, that's how we base those figures on it. And going back to our last discussion in City Hall, the comment was then, I think, that any savings, and setting the example for solar, uh, made a lot of sense. Because City Hall, you know, the, the savings over the twenty-year period was obviously much smaller from a percentage standpoint than what's being proposed here, but when you send the numbers back, I'm like, whoa. I mean, that, that makes a significant difference in both locations, because outside of employee cost, heating and air conditioning, those two facilities are the number one, uh, budgetary item. So, yeah, continuing to offset would be, would be good. I just want to, for, for my purposes, I want to make sure that you're okay with me telling him not to do it in front of the, the buildings and then using ground mounted. My preference would be going back to him and say, if you're going to do what I would consider a ground mounted, that they be incorporated into a sun shade, uh, so that from a visibility perspective, we're not, we're not making a focal point of the building. With the exception of maybe here, we already have a leach field, um, at the rear of this property, and, you know, there is potential there, I think, to, to do a ground mounted sign that would be completely hidden, um, from, from view, basically, if that's an option for him.
Is, is roof-mounted not an option at that facility, or not something?
So roof mount, if you look at the LBC, there is, the, the roof is covered at the LBC.
Okay.
Um, it is not here, and it's because of the, the direction.
Okay.
Obviously, he wants the, the solar shades have to face the south.
Correct.
And the sp, goes north of south, so there would be some savings, but probably not enough to justify putting, like, mounting them on this peak.
Sure.
So then I have one more question. Is, are, are we tied to the physical location that's being, um, the beneficiary of the solar input, or are we thinking that maybe a solar field someplace else, like the public works site, might be an option?
So, to answer your question, if we did it in conjunction with Alliant, the public works site might be an option in the future, but it would have to be in conjunction with Alliant, and it would have to be a deal with them, because we have no way of distributing the power that comes from that solar field without either ITC or Alliant. So they would essentially have to agree to allow us to put a solar field on their grid. And...
So why is that different, though, than here, just for my own?
Because we're not necessarily putting it on the grid per se, so we're not kicking this back out on...
No, so we're choosing that power to...
Yes, to lower the landscape.
And then we, and then, okay, all right, I got it.
So we're purchasing less.
Okay, power. So theoretically, once the public works building goes in out there, I mean, that's not today.
It could handle that facility. We could, again, we could reach out to Alliant and, and I have, with our government rep, indicated to her that we would be interested in pilot programs, which Alliant has heard us talk about, um, if, if it's feasible here. Uh, but again, for us to build our own without being able to distribute or tie into their network, um, would be subject to specifically the building that's attached outside.
So, I mean, to answer your immediate question about the facility being in front of the PD department, I kind of went eh when I saw that on the map, and said, oh my gosh, that would be really bad. So, that's my reaction to what I saw on that map, but I, I needed further input, because I didn't understand the constraints of this particular program versus where maybe we want to go longer term, um, with a dis, a network where we could distribute our power. So, thank you for informing me.
Yeah, it, you know, and I think that's kind of been the comment that's made across the state, and one of the challenges when you have Alliant in America that probably cover the majority of the, the state, is you need their buy-in to get it on their grid system, essentially. Citco and some of the cooperatives are a little bit easier to work with, uh, because they're looking for those projects to, to meet requirements of, of the state federal government, but, um, I, I will say that Alliant has been really receptive in my conversations, nothing has come to fruition yet, but they've been receptive to the communication back and forth, and, and, you know, my willingness to say, please consider us, you know, on the forefront of, of those pilot projects, at least for conversation purposes, if and when you're ready to, to kind of pull the trigger.
So we have this thing where you're ready, what kind of timeframe will we be talking about if you were to engage them? That's my concern, is how far does that stretch things out?
I, you know, I don't, I, I can't say. I can tell you that eight years ago, nine years ago, um, there was at least two or three Supreme Court cases, whereas those companies were suing the, the solar companies for, it was a lot of conversation about putting dirty power back onto the grid and this and that. So where we're at today, where it's being promoted, so, you know, eight years is, eight, ten years is a long time and one's lifetime, but in government work, it's, it's fairly short, so I, I don't know. Is it within the next five years? I would say I highly doubt it, um, but the conversations could happen within that period.
So if we were to go with the proposal that's put in front of us, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the, the firm's name, but if we were to pursue that as our option, and then in two or three years, Alliant comes around and says, yes, Montburn is not ready to work with you, would there be any downside to making that?
I don't believe so, because again, I think at both locations, this isn't a, it, the, the solar that's being proposed is not going to take the entire load of, uh, electric that is required at both locations. Um, the savings would be even higher than what they are. I believe that if we look at doing something like a solar farm, we are looking at kind of a city-wide advantage to housing that versus an individual building. My perception, but, um, I don't, I don't see there's, that there's any downside, other than if we do put or get a solar array farm, and we further reduce the electric cost for this community in general, um, it just goes back to the saving a little bit more each location.
So, uh, I'm interested in looking at a variety of different things, not just in terms of the short term with the police and, and the LBC, but, um, one of the things that I've, uh, learned about recently is the, this concept of agricultural tanks, and that's a mouthful. Uh, if, if you do the research on Iowa State is actually, um, they're partnering with somebody, I forget who it is now, they're putting in a, a solar farm that also does agriculture, and the rationale, and I've never thought of this, and it's really fascinating when you get to look at it, is that there are certain crops or vegetables that actually prefer shade, and so we, we've all heard the concerns with the Holland Farm and Penguin Farm with losing agricultural ground. You can actually design the, the solar arrays in such a way that you can then have gardens or, or, in the, in the case of Iowa State, farming. So, you know, we've often kicked around the, the community gardens and, and whatnot, but I would like to, to think of some of those types of applications, perhaps not on this program, but in others. Um, another place that I was thinking, if, if you get to, if, if we get to a point where we're able to work with, um, uh, Alliant, you know, I, I think of Bryant Park, and that back fence with the railroad behind it, if you have raised solar panels along that back fence, you know, that's, to me, it would seem like that would be a, a, a great, uh, way to expand our solar capacity without impeding any activity or any space. Um, so I, it's just that, let's be open-minded and think about what possibilities are out there, um, because, uh, you know, I, I was fascinated by the, uh, what they're, they're doing. They're literally building it in such a way that, uh, they can use farm equipment under these solar panels and, and raise crops in a way that, you know, people never thought you could do, you, you know, once you put up the solar panels, you lost that ground and it wasn't good for anything. So, it's just something, again, to think about, and I, I appreciate the fact that you are thinking things like sun shade, um, um, you know, using a solar panel to, to create power as well as creating shade for people to park under, uh, it's a really great idea. I can tell you, when I was in Saudi Arabia once, and they, they just had these little umbrellas that you park your cars under, but, um, I just can't imagine how much power they would have been producing if those would have been solar panels, and I can tell you that the difference in temperature under those little umbrellas compared to outside those umbrellas was fascinating. So I, I, I just appreciate the wide view you're taking.
Speaking of sun shades, in the LBC, we talked about mounting something on the side for that patio area. I don't know directionality well enough to know if that would be an option.
It's possible, so we'll have that conversation with them. It's a little bit more challenging, because they can, on the parking lot, they can can lever, so they can actually do the construction without touching the concrete, you can lever. At the, on that particular side, kind of one of the challenges that we run into is, how do we not hook it to the building?
Right.
Not tear out the patio, I mean, so, um...
We're trying to solve the problem of gravity, you know, like, what we're...
And the, and the angle of the, of the, and the building versus the maximum arc of the sun.
Yeah, I just think, um, you know, it would just be a continuation of kind of the culture that we created.
Yep, yeah, I agree. Great discussion, and, um, and I know it's just a, a discussion item at this point, but, uh, please take this on to your partner, if you still want to continue.
Moving forward, what I will do is just basically give them the, his parameters, he can kind of lock in more definitively to give us probably a better, better idea of rates. One of the challenges with solar is they're, they're still, I mean, the expenses come down, but they're still expensive to put in, so tax credits have been a, a big part of most of those programs, and there's no guarantee, uh, depending on administrations, if they ever get extended. So, the, I guess the risk right now would be the next set of tax credits, I think, um, is that could expire this year, so trying to get a project put together before you know that something could potentially leave us, is imperative. So, what I'm going to do is just give him his parameters, have him get a, a proposal back to us, and then as soon as he did, then it's going to be in front of the council for consideration. and then as soon as he did, then we'll meet in front of the council for consideration.
Would I need to prepare any public works staff for a crash course with meetings?
So no, that's the beauty part of the, at least from City Hall's perspective, is they tied in the district. So he monitors this from the Moyn Metro and he can tell whether or not, you know, working, they're not working. And while it's part of this PPE, it's their baby. So that's the other baby, is we're not responsible until after the back. If we were to do the system outright on our own, then yes, we would all be in a crash course and try to clean them and make sure we're getting open duty.
And we're not talking about storage batteries attached to this system either. So that's where the maintenance and that additional cost comes in. So that's not part of the discussion. Thanks for doing the session on the solar reports, mayor report. I want to pass on five things to council here. First of all, I think I want to engage with county mayors. And I'm not sure that the group that existed before, but I got an invitation to meet with county mayors on start that next month, end of this month, I guess. The second thing I want to engage in is conference board, back in my school board days, and it still continues. School board presidents and mayors work at the assessor's office a couple of times a year regarding to assessment rates, valuations, the role that the assessor's department does, the three pro, setting of taxes, et cetera. So I'd grant to that, that meeting, they had that one. Third thing I want to mention is, this one, I did a query of Mayor Hampton about what type of things, how are you related to Superintendent Bayport? And I had my first meeting there and I know they met on a monthly basis. I think we're gonna be more like on a quarterly basis. So we're gonna have that relationship there and that will continue. And I asked for a meeting with Cornell through the administration, who should that be? And I've got a meeting with President Brand and that may be a once a year type of meeting. So that, that's on my agenda. And the visiting was, oh, engagement at the American Services, you know, Doug pukes a sale on that once a year, but that is a huge frigging deal. That's a, a big deal. So, and we've got Citizen Mike Buser, that's how it's pronounced, who's very engaged in that process and Doug is very much a part of that process. So I'm gonna, and those are Zoom meetings at this point, so I'm gonna engage with that with little capacity. I guess the biggest thing is a changeover in leadership was Steve Conick. Was he a former police, or fire chief, was he the C R A P?
He was with C R A P's police department.
Oh, police, okay. But he's retired from EMS role, so.
EMA, yep. Emergency management coordinator. He's the director of them.
But that was something I found pretty interesting, too. So that's, that's my mayor's report, those are my bullets. Any other council reports, committee reports, the administration's report?
I've got CDG board meetings Wednesday morning and just FYI, they are starting, getting geared up for an outdoor seating proposal. Joe's calling together a meeting, so it'll be like, you know, the did previously. Well, they will, you know, look to communicate and come forth to us with some sort of recommendation.
So this is similar to what's been in private, Hubel and Skillet and.
That one will probably not exist anymore because those have changed hands. I have, just so everybody's fully aware, I fielded more complaints this year than I have to share that with Joe. So with the committee, trying to ensure that the understanding is how did this begin? How did we get here and to make sure that the conversations happen? I think the first year, everybody was still in the midst of COVID and pretty understanding and this year, not as much understanding.
What are the complaints about?
Uh, mainly part of it. And I.
Who are the complaints from, business people or from?
Both.
Can you just share all of the gems that he's got?
Yes, and I have, I keep him apprised of what's going on so that he can make, make sure to share that with the committee.
Thank you, Seth. I find, find that ironic because the other night I was doing pickup at one of the local businesses and I was thinking, boy, it would be nice if there were a couple, you know, 10-minute, you know, pickup spots somewhere. But, but again, having been through this for, you know, for 20-some years, I, I know that every parking spot is precious. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge.
Do you like to see your decision made?
The, the only other thing that I had is, just for, for purposes, for conversations, we are doing some rubbing work around the quarry.
Rubbing?
Rubbing, so clearing a path in between the dog park and the quarry itself. All of this was not possible because the DOT controlled the south side of the right of way and we couldn't, you know, really make the quarry a potential entity. We had that opportunity. Matt, Nella, and I are actually meeting about it again tomorrow. There is no funding or plan, it just happened to be, we have the equipment and in the middle of winter, especially when, hasn't some of this been last? The guys are, are able to get out there and do some of that work when the ground is hard and it doesn't leave, you know, significant running. So I made them reschedule this week. There is no real planned project other than we spent a significant amount of money adding bacteria and things to the quarry, to deuterium, algae and things like that. And we're gonna have probably another year of that. They're asking us to potentially, you know, add a windmill to aerate some of that. So it's kind of been a forgotten piece in that park for so long enough. Now that we have the opportunity to have the right of way, I get pressured a lot from individuals about, can we do something with it to take advantage of it? So just a brief heads up, that's what was actually going on. There's really nothing, no construction starting, but just wanted to get some of the volunteer county base of species out of there by the end of the opportunity to do it.
So I have, I have one thing that I want to add to what Steph brought up. There is a group that will be going to the National Main Street Conference in May on behalf as representatives of Mount Runyon. I'm going to be going. My purpose in going is to listen from a council point of view, not to listen from a volunteer point of view. I just wanted to be upfront with that whole thing. And then secondly, the Housing Commission is putting together yet another proposal that they will be bringing forward to the council for our understanding. Probably, I don't know, I would say spring, early summer. It is a funding mechanism to support people who meet criteria to subsidize their down payments. So they'll, they'll be bringing forward a proposal there and I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Deb.
I have a question.
And then, I'm sorry, number three.
Oh, sorry.
The pool, the pool RFP evaluation process continues on the 10th, which is Thursday, where we are going to be going through the interviews with the chosen RFP presenters to figure out maybe what our next step might be here.
Where are we looking for this and kick it off for this time?
So I sent another email and that's actually on me. I did not email them until the end of January because I had told them that to hold off, we were gonna wait till the new council was seated to make sure. And so I just need to get dates set with them. But my expectations will be in March, but it'll be, it's just a little screwy this room rate, so.
I know that, you know, it would take them some time just to kick that off, so to say, but.
Yes.
And what I wouldn't want is to have, I would imagine that the pool will have that input component similar to whatever we're gonna do with conference. And we want to have publicly input meetings and whatnot for both running against each other or, you know, I mean, just overwhelming people.
That's.
That, so. And I don't know, the pool RFP or conversation that we did kick off that quickly, but.
I, I have a feeling we could put two lines on the paper when it related to the pool.
We'd have one on the. Yeah, right. I just would have wanted that to then we get, you know, 100 people at a pool thing and four people.
No, I think, you know, I will say that it's kind of one of the years that's had past. We, we've intentionally not completed a few projects in the last couple of years because of pricing and availability of supplies, things of that nature have really drawn up costs. But the downside to that obviously is, is that all of those projects are going to start up on. So I've already indicated to you through the department heads that they are all picking a project and they're all going to be in charge of one of those projects. And then, you know, we're gonna get together to, I, do the process right now.
Anything else to report? Anything else, please come before this council, not tonight, secure. Thank you very much.